The City of Seaside. The City of Seaside Success Agency to Redevelopment Agency, a regular meeting, a hardcore council chambers Thursday, December the nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, five P M. will come to order. A roll call, please.
Council and agency member Miller.
Here.
Council and agency member Burks.
Here.
Council and agency member Garcia Arizona.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim and Vice Chair Pacheco. Mayor and Chair Oglesby.
Here.
You do have a quorum.
Thank you so much. I would, uh, we have a pastor less here for the invocation than I will ask Chief Gutierrez to lead us in a pledge of allegiance if she would, when that time comes.
Let us pray. Christ God our Father, we thank you for this time this day. Lord, we now thank you for this season. For truly your son is the reason for the season. Now, Lord, as we assemble here tonight to begin a new journey, a new venture with a couple of our those that sit here on the council, Lord, we ask that you would allow them to hear the heart of the people, see the heart of the people, but lead the people. Lord, we ask that they would continue to do what they've been doing, but yet hear and see a bigger vision for our city. Lord, we thank you for all those that have assembled here tonight. Those that are here because they want to be or those that are here because they have to be. We thank you now, God, for this day. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen. Did I say something? United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Those who have to be here. I wonder who those are. We'll go to item number four, which is review an agenda. City manager, is any additions or deletions from the agenda?
No, sir.
Thank you so much. And next we'll go to a public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the city council matters underneath the jurisdiction of the city of Seaside may do so now during public comment for up to three minutes. This is also the time to comment on presentation items and to to be clear, this is the time to give your wishes to the council, the elected officials. For the benefit of public, please state your name. Public comment is open.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone.
What I would do is I'm going to knock it down for two, two minutes. Public comments, two minutes.
Thank you, mayor, council, interim city manager and everyone else who's making this possible. I want to wish everybody happy holiday season. The fire trucks look so beautiful outside with their decorations on them. I haven't had an opportunity to see police car, but that's maybe good news, bad news. Good news is I had that kind of encounter. I was so distracted looking at the beautiful Fremont Islands. I missed my turn. The city hall got here late. I see construction everywhere and I hold you guys responsible. That's a good thing. We got to got more of that. Let's invest in America. I think our decorations are lovely. The lights are pretty. I love the lights on the outside of the building. How about pink for Valentine's? Green for St. Patrick's Day, red, white, and blue, Fourth of July. We can do it. Let's get more lights. I think they look cool. I want to thank everybody from the city who worked over the weekend with that storm. We had fire trucks because lines downs, trees down, branches down. They're just everywhere. And lastly, it has finally happened. Grand view. The road to Baghdad. Between Circle and Ord Grove since twenty oh four. No more. The road to Baghdad. You guys have done it. We have fixed the worst road in Seaside and made it the best road in Seaside. And once again, I hold the city council and the mayor personally responsible for getting that knocked out. And I want to thank you. May you all have a happy holiday and I wish everyone the causes of happiness. More road construction, please.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone.
Thank you. My name is Lucy Watson. I just want to congratulate all of the elected mayor and pro mayor pro chairman and all of them who won the election this year. And I just say want a congratulation to you and you were doing an outstanding job. And just want to let you know that we, the community, is here for you if anything that you feel that you need your community to be at your back. We're here for you. And I just want to say, when I look around and see the audience, it says a lot about the city of Seaside. See all of the police and all of the elected officials are around. And just want to say congratulations to you again, and may God continue to bless and keep you. And may he also be in your life for the rest of your life. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tiffany Meyer. I'm with the Neighborhood Improvement Commission, but I'm here today speaking as a private citizen. I would just like to say congratulations to all of those who were reelected. And I would also like to say thank you to all of those who actually ran as well that didn't get elected. That's part of our democratic process and it's what makes our country so great. So I'd like to thank all of them as well and for bringing up topics of of concern that maybe our newly elected or reelected officials will give consideration to. I also want to thank you for all the great work that you are doing and have done. The medians look great. Like Linda said, they are so beautiful that you could get lost just looking at them. So I wait to, I can't wait to see how it's all done. I want to thank all of our city officials and our police and fire department and wish a happy retirement to Chief Gutierrez. I, I think she's done a great job and I'm really happy for her and her, the chances she has to retire. And thank you and God bless.
Mr. Mayor and council, on Monday, the twenty-third, we will be having our seasonal Pastor Herbert Hoover Lusk Basket giveaway. Monday, the twenty-third, we open at twelve thirty. We will be giving away three hundred plus good dinner baskets and food. Turkey, ham. Meat items. So at twelve thirty, if you're able, if you just want to come out and be there, it's going to be, we'll have Christmas gifts. I will have three Christmas trees. So if you know someone, families that are in need or just, just want to keep their finances in their pocket right now and be, receive a blessing on the twenty-third Monday at twelve thirty. That's the Missionary Baptist Church, three ninety Elm Street, Seaside, California.
How you doing, Mr. Mayor? Good evening, council. We just wanted to say thank you for attending on December fourteenth, this past Saturday, our Youth Empowerment Breaking Barriers activity that we held at the Boys and Girls Club. My name is Jake Osborne, the program manager for our Elevate Youth Program for the Village Project. So once again, that activity showed everybody coming together as a collective, just really breaking those barriers and building bridges. So thank you all for coming. We have one of our local youth here as well that would like to say a couple words.
My name is Yuchina Fong Azay. I attend Seaside High. I appreciate the mayor and the council for coming to the event on Saturday. Me and my peers appreciate it for you guys coming. I would thank the fire department for helping out on Saturday and doing what they do best. But I like to see, me and my peers are from Elevate Youth and I'd like to see more of the mayor and the council attending more of our events and let's thank everyone for coming. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, mayor and members of the council, public staff. My name is Dennis Alexander and I'm a member of the N I C Neighborhood Improvement Commission. I've been speaking here as a citizen tonight. First of all, I want to thank the mayor and the council members that were reelected. It's a tough job, I know, and you guys are doing a great job. Keep it up. But I want to give a particular thanks to the fire department today. This past week weekend with the storms that came, a couple of, well, many trees fell, but a couple fell on houses. And there was maybe more than one, but there was one house in particular that the fire department without calling the disaster action team and the Red Cross, or having them, the, the residents of the house who are now displaced, call the, the red, red, have them call the Red Cross. The fire department called the Red Cross themselves and said, hey, go check this out. And the disaster action team members did. We are, they went to the families the next morning. Those families were unexpecting the Red Cross to be there. And an hour later, after opening a case, they were well on their way to recovery with other information. So I just want to thank the fire department. The fire department is always on top of it. They're great partners with the Red Cross and other agencies. You guys are the best and ladies as well. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, city manager, city attorney, city council, Joe Covich, resident of the city of Seaside and founder of Big View AI. I am here to congratulate you on your leadership in the city of Seaside and all that you're doing in terms of working together as one cohesive unit, working in unity for the health, welfare, and long-term stability of this community. When I came back from the war in Ukraine, I found that my life was a little bit different and I needed to do something with my time. And I started getting involved with seeing what was going on in my community and getting to know our mayor here, Mayor Oglesby and city council member Alex Miller, getting to know what's going on in the community. And in that time, the last couple of years, I go out in the community and I observe what's going on in terms of the development projects that you're working on. And I see them come to fruition. And it's just every time I go out, I see something new. It's being invested in that makes this city more valuable, more beautiful, and attracts people, families that want to come here and raise their kids to be the next generation. So I want to thank you. And I also want to thank Seaside Fire Chief Mary Gutierrez for her leadership here in the city and the tools that she's provided to the children. And the tools that she's provided the children. I had got an opportunity to go up to the, the fair here a couple of months back. I believe you were there. And I saw her team interacting with the kids and providing them tools that are going to be vital and helping them to be successful as they grow up in this community. So thank you. And for the Seaside Fire Department, I see them working. I'm out at all hours, two in the morning, five in the morning. I saw what went down at the Seaside Library a couple of days ago, five in the morning. There's a lot going on here that the Seaside Fire Department and the Police Department have to deal with, and they're doing a great job. Thank you all.
Carla Lobo, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Good evening, Carla Lobo. Speaking on behalf of Central Coast Democratic Socialists of America, my supporters and my campaign team, I want to congratulate the incumbents on their reelection and the trust placed in them. Elections represents the voice of the people and I respect the journey ahead for these newly elected. On behalf of CCDSA, I also want to express our desire to see meaningful discussions take place leading into twenty twenty-six. This past election cycle demonstrated limited interest in robust debates on subject matters that we dare not speak during public comment. With the notable exception of Mr. Pacheco, as representatives of Seaside, I urge you all to foster a spirit of collaboration and open dialogue, including those with different viewpoints to ensure the best outcomes of our residents. Looking forward, I'm excited about the possibilities the next two years will bring for Seaside. We must remember that the house divided is never united. In seventeen ninety-six, George Washington warned us, his farewell address stated political parties are likely to become potent engines by which cunning, ambitious, unprincipled men will be enabled to subvert the power of the people and observe for themselves the reign of government. But today, in twenty twenty-five, we must consider how we've come and how far we still need to go. In nineteen in seventeen ninety-six, women didn't exist in the political sphere, let alone had the rights, but now we hold the power to shape the very fabric of our society that we birth. What we choose to do with the influence will determine the life and future of our community and those in it. I have gifts for the three incumbents and I wish you well. You have my support fully as we are a community. I'd like to make a request for twenty twenty-five to add some decorum to some of the comments that come when we when we meet. I ask that because it's insulting to me and our community when our diocese is being called stupid or being belittled in a way that could be negative to our, not only our community, but those that are watching that are underage. And I apologize. I'm sick today. So I thank you again, Maricela or Dominique. If you guys can do me the, the kind honor to give the, the gifts from from me, CCDSA, my supporters and my campaign. Thank you.
Diego Amaro, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
My name is Diego Amaro. I just want to congratulate the entire council on their elections and their reelections. Particularly, I want to say congratulations to Alexis Garcia Arizona for his reelection. The work he's done for the city of Seaside has been invaluable and I know that the work he continues to do will be as such. Thank you and congratulations to the entire city council.
Good evening, everyone. So congratulations to all of you. We're happy to be here this evening. We have our youth from the Seaside Rising Youth Leadership Academy. And we wanted to invite you all to our third annual youth summit coming up on Saturday from five to eight at the Old Mar Center. Thanks to your all's support for continuing to invest in our youth. They're just making good strides and being able to showcase the talent that they have, the work and the investment that they're putting into our communities. And so if they want to come here tonight to show their support and also to invite you all. You want to say anything?
We hope to see you there on Saturday. Okay.
But to other youth that are listening in, it is a free event. Students will receive a twenty-five dollar gift card. There's free food, entertainment. Giveaways. I don't want to say too much, but we usually do give away a PS five. And other amazing gifts, but there's going to be youth talent in the room. We have Polenke Arts coming and some other local youth that are going to be performing and just there to uplift and love on one another. So welcome you all to come. Thank you.
I'm going to just add a little because Deja has been keeping the secret, but we do have an awesome keynote speaker that is going to speak to and uplift the youth in the community and some of the things that we have been dealing with coming from our Attorney General's Office in with a special message from him as well. So this is open for Attorney General's Office in with a a special message from him as well. So this is open for the youth, the parents, and we definitely want to see our city officials there. Well, the the mayor is giving the welcome.
And then I just wanted to add what everyone else said. I really appreciate the roads being fixed and like the medians and everything. It does look really nice. Thank you.
Good evening, uh city council members and mayor. Uh, my name is Rulio Verandis and uh I think that I see all the familiar faces from last year and the year before, which tells me that even though we have elections, you guys are doing a great job and the job continues. What it also tells me is that there's stability in this city. Uh, we have a lot of turmoil going around in this country, but here locally, which is where it really counts, we have stability and I think that is really important for you guys to realize that uh we continue to march in such a way. Uh, what I really appreciate from the city council, besides what's already been mentioned, is that you guys work with the local parks uh and really I see Dave Pacheco and I see Alex and I see you, mayor, working with us in the park system. And it just goes to show you how you guys are just ready to put your hands down into the dirt and get things done, literally speaking. And then, of course, you have a police officer association here that with a group of police officers that is just terrific and that supports this city wholeheartedly. So we really appreciate them and, of course, the fire department. They're only two minutes away from my house and uh boy, I can count on them if there's something that happens to my ticker. So thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor Oglesby, members of the city council, city staff. My name is Jonathan Amadi. I'm a resident of Seaside and as of this past Monday, I was sworn in as the newest member of the Monterey Peninsula Airport District Board. And I just wanted to come uh before you, say congratulations on your elections and also make you and all the public aware, if there are any issues pertaining to operations at the airport that you want the board or the airport staff to be aware of, you can reach me at my email address, which is j amadi, A H M A D I at montereyairport.com or you can reach me on my cell, three one zero five zero zero five one five eight, and I'll be happy to address them. Thank you all so much and congratulations again.
Mayor, no other members of the public have come forward to make public comment.
Uh, thank you. Uh, public comment is closed. Uh, the city manager, any issues, uh questions or concerns, you can answer at this time.
Uh, no, everyone seemed pretty happy.
Yeah, yeah, didn't hear too many complaints. Yeah, uh, we'll we'll just uh keep the agenda moving. We'll next go to presentations, which is um six A. Uh, I guess I should have said this earlier, but uh for those of you who may not know, our police fire chief is retiring and this should be her last meeting, um I believe, unless we have some type of emergency or something. Uh, but we want to acknowledge her and um celebrate her uh city manager.
Well, thank you, mayor. Uh, I was unprepared uh for for remarks. It's my understanding that uh we have a plaque to present and and uh the the mayor is the appropriate official to uh present the plaque and then and then at some point, I think the mayor is going to ask me uh to deliver something. And then I'll be ready.
The plan was to do this on the fifth, but it got so late in the evening that I I told the chief I wanted to do it when the room was packed because that's what she deserved and we appreciate her. So that's why we're doing it on today. So I will call down the the chief. We'll start with this one. Fire Chief Mary Gutierrez. I want to present this plaque to you uh from the city of Seaside, presented to Fire Chief Mary Gutierrez. In honor of your dedicated service, leadership and unwavering commitment to the safety and well-being of our community, your exemplary career has been marked by courageous compassion and a steadfast commitment to excellence, which is definitely true. With heartfelt appreciation and best wishes on your retirement, the city of Seaside City Council, Mary Ann Oglesby, Mayor Lieutenant Dave Pacheco, Council Member Alexis Garcia Zola, Council Member Rita Burges, Council Member uh Alex Miller, uh we present this plaque to you. Uh, you want to, okay, it's more to come to, more to come, more more things, more things. You know, we were trying to figure out how to really, how to really uh make this a a memorable moment for you. And so I was like, well, why don't we just, you know, do something, give her the key to the city. As many times as she has worked and opened up doors uh for the citizens, whether they locked out, trying to get out through a fire or you trying to get in because of fire, uh but you know, through the magic of the city manager, he said, well, a key, why just give her a key when you give her this right here? In that same spirit, in that same spirit, as many doors that the chief has kicked in, not only, not only has gone through the ranks as a female firefighter, she has put more female firefighters on our team than any other uh fire chief and I'm sure she motivated more to go to other um uh station houses. But you know, as a key, you know, normally I give a key to citizens so they can come and go into the city anytime they want. Uh, but for you, chief, I know you just want to break down doors and and glass ceilings. So congratulations to you. It's an honor for me to extend this uh axe, this city axe. Uh, if there's any words uh you may want to have. And then, of course, your husband come down and we take some pictures of you and your husband down here.
So yes, I'll make it brief. Uh, we have a full chambers and I first want to start, of course, by thanking my husband, Robert Gutierrez. Without him, um I couldn't have um met the challenge uh for the last four years here. Um, I like meeting challenges. I felt embraced by this city. I felt embraced by the residents and the citizens of this community. I felt the love. Uh, I still do. Um, that's what makes it difficult to leave. Um, I feel honored that uh city manager Craig Malin gave me an opportunity four years ago. He saw something in me and I'm glad that he saw it. Otherwise, I wouldn't be able to serve here and be here for all of you. Um, and that means a lot to me. I come to work each day wanting to make a difference. Um, and yes, um, I like breaking glass ceilings. I've done it my whole life. Um, and I want to inspire both young men and women. Um, I couldn't have done it without the support of all the firefighters here. They're absolutely incredible, all of them. They work so hard. They do so much with very little, but they appreciate everything and they appreciate this community. Um, and again, Chief Borges, who's been an incredible sidekick for me, like a brother, um our council, um who I absolutely admire and I appreciate all of you and your support, uh all our department heads. Um, it's been an incredible journey of thirty-six years in the fire service and at some point, we all have to say, it's it's time to hang up our our jacket. It's time to put away our badge and it's hard to do that when you're a servant and you like to serve. So I appreciate all of you and love you all. Thank you.
Take it now, but I don't know. Yeah, I mean, I want you to take an accent to the audience, chief. Uh, but while we're Yeah, of course, of course, supervisor. And so come on now, chief and Yeah, it was
So as your county elected county supervisor, Wendy Rudaski, um I have something on behalf of the county board of supervisors um that I wanted to present. And I think people think about fire, um uh you think about your your fire uh firefighters and your fire chief and you think about responding to um to fire fire calls. You think about responding to medical emergencies. But um what I know as a chief uh in her capacity uh coming into service uh during the height of the COVID pandemic, um there's this whole other realm of work that your fire chief um uh handles in terms of the city's uh emergency response and crisis preparation work. And um you have an exceptional leader here who really stepped into leadership uh preparing Seaside and coordinating with not just the county, but with all of the cities um and the state during COVID, during all of the disasters that we've had, during floods, during fires. Um, so not just in the response to emergencies, but in the preparation regionally to emergencies and the coordination and the mutual aid, um and and making sure that we collectively are prepared to respond to whatever crisis may come our way uh as a region. So I have a proclamation. I want to read some of these verhasse's because they're um nothing um uh that you've earned every single one of them. Uh, so um before we trip forward in the county, um Monterey, um I in honor of our Seaside Fire Chief Mary Gutierrez's retirement, whereas Mary Gutierrez has dedicated an extraordinary thirty-six years to public safety and firefighting, demonstrating unwavering commitment, leadership and resilience in service to the communities she has served. And whereas Mary Gutierrez had began her career in nineteen eighty-three as a community public uh service officer at the University of California, Santa Barbara, while pursuing a degree in pre-law and political science, earning a bachelor's degree in nineteen eighty-six. And whereas Mary Gutierrez's journey into firefighting began in nineteen eighty-seven, earning certifications as an emergency medical technician and firefighter one through Shabat College and in nineteen eighty-nine, becoming a full-time firefighter at Lawrence Livermore National Laboratory Fire Department, where she rose to the rank as fire engineer. Whereas Mary Gutierrez advanced her education and expertise by becoming a certified state paramedic through UCSF in nineteen ninety-four, a commitment to continual learning that characterized her entire career. And whereas Mary Gutierrez pursued her dream of serving in a large city fire department, joining the city of San Jose Fire Department in nineteen ninety-five, where she served with distinction for nearly twenty years, rising through the ranks to battalion chief, where she met her husband, Robert Gutierrez. And whereas Mary Gutierrez continued her exceptional career with the city of Gilroy Fire Department as division chief, serving in that capacity for six years, including as acting fire chief before her initial retirement in twenty twenty. Nice try. Yes, whereas Mary Gutierrez answered the call of service once again, joining the city of Seaside as fire chief in twenty twenty during the height of the pandemic. Um, and whereas Chief Mary Gutierrez will retire on December thirty-first, concluding an illustrious career in public safety, um where you'll be deeply missed by your colleagues, by the community of Seaside, by the entire county of Monterey, I mean, all of those who've had the honor to work with you. And all of those who've been inspired into leadership and public service um by watching you um as a leader. Uh, so on behalf of all the residents of Monterey County, we congratulate and commend Fire Chief Mary Gutierrez on your well-deserved retirement. Thank you for your service.
Yes.
Sweetheart, thank you so much. Thank you. Now you can listen. I think that
And there's more. You guys thought you chose to be here and I know you're forced to stay longer to listen. I'm Dawn Addis. I'm your assembly member and this is not about me, but one thing I do want to say before I start is I get to represent fifteen cities and I've never ever been to a city council meeting like this where everybody is just happy and commending their city council for being so amazing. Good to see you over there. Um, and I just, I want to commend all of you in the audience because it takes a strong public presence to have a strong city council and it takes that kind of support. So thank you to all of you, but um most importantly, to somebody who doesn't have to be here, but is, it's an honor to recognize and celebrate Chief uh Fire Chief Mary Gutierrez on behalf of Speaker Rivas, on behalf of State Senator Laird, on behalf of myself and on behalf of the entire California State Legislature uh for your thirty-six-year career in fire service and public safety, for your choice in coming back to Seaside. And I was asked to share some of the things that Chief Gutierrez has done specifically for the city of Seaside and she has overseen the renovation of Seaside's fire station, overseen the design of Seaside's future second fire station on former Fort Worth property, teamed up with the police department in developing a fire and police cadet program, established a relationship, and I see some folks out here that are part of this, established a relationship and sister city partnership with the Oaxaca, Mexico Fire Department, which I know is incredibly important, increased staffing to develop a full-time deputy chief fire marshal program, improved the emergency response fleet and hired nine new firefighters, all for the city of Seaside. So I think a round of applause. Mayor Oglesby alluded to the chief having broken glass ceilings and when I walked in and we were chatting and I asked her, how many uh women fire chiefs are there anyways? And she said, well, nationwide, only three percent of firefighters at all are women. So you can imagine the percent that are actually fire chiefs and there's maybe one other woman fire chief in the entire state of California and we have forty million people. So really a huge kudos to you for everything you've done and I will present you the resolution and just say a deep, deep thank you. Bigger's not always better, but we like ours to be bigger ourselves.
I believe that's it, chief. Wonderful, wonderful. So lucky, so lucky to have you um with us and and uh the service you rendered to us. We're so lucky to have you. Uh, let's go on to uh a consent agenda item number seven, seven A, adopt a resolution reciting the results of the November fifth, two thousand twenty-four municipal election and certifying the appointment of the officers of mayor and the city council members. Uh, B, adopt a resolution receiving the five-year report and receipt and use of development impact fees and make an appropriate findings. C, adopt a resolution counseling the January second, two thousand twenty-five regular council meeting. D, uh review and approve purchase and sale contract for the fifteen ninety-one Del Monte Avenue for one million, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Authorized expenditure of Fort Worth housing funds for the acquisition and incidental costs and authorized stack to take all other actions to finalize the acquisition. E, adopt a resolution declaring the vestal's abatement of the police station in emergency and approving an agreement for contractor service with Monterey Environmental Consultants uh and service for amount not to exceed sixty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Uh, that's Monterey Environmental Solutions and Services. That concludes the reading of the consent agenda. What, is there any item that the council member would like to pull up to consent agenda? D, please. Okay, is there any item, anyone in the audience would like to pull off the agenda? Uh, thank you so much. Bringing it back to the dais, what is the will of the council?
Move ahead. Excluding D.
Yeah, D is not in the consent. Uh, it's been probably moved.
In a second.
Probably moved in second uh to get out to public, uh public comment on our consent agenda items.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine. Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. Mayor, no members of the public have come forward to make public comment.
Thank you so much. Public comment is closed. Bringing it back to the dais. All those in favor use the right of sign voting, which is aye.
Aye.
Nays have the same right. Abstentions. Ayes have it motion carried unanimously. Item number D, review and approve purchase and sale contract for 1591 Del Monte Avenue for $1,150,000. Authorized expenditure of affordable housing funds for the acquisition and incidental costs and authorized staff to take all actions to finalize the acquisition. Councilmember Miller, questions, issues or concerns?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just curious on the appraisal on this, if we got an appraisal and when the appraisal was done and when we received it.
Thank you. See you, Mayor.
Yes, we have an appraisal. The appraisal was $1,270,000. I believe we received the appraisal on the 16th, I'm told. So is the three days, is that enough time for the city to review the appraisal and make a fair judgment on this?
We have such an excellent staff. The answer is yes.
And the city council met in one time on this issue, just the one time that we met.
The city council gave directions to staff in close session. And that was in October. As I recall. Because there was one meeting that went, it might be in November. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Just to to clarify some things. Again, this is funds from our Affordable Housing Fund. Can you guys hear me? Affordable Housing Fund. This purchase is in line with our vision and goals for the last, I don't know, two or three years of controlling more affordable housing to, you know, keep the cost low. So, you know, as it was indicated that somehow this is a short timeframe. This is what we've been doing for the last four or five years is trying to purchase these type of units. And so staff have more than enough direction. We're getting this for way more than what it was appraised for. And we expected appraisal to come in. It came in. When it came in, we staff negotiated a lower price and they're authorized, they're authorized to buy it, make an offer. And we're buying it tonight with this vote. But it wasn't a short runway. This is what we've been doing over the last couple of years. Take it out to the public. Public comment is open.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone.
Hi, this is Linda Cunningham again. And I forgot to say the first time, I am a member of the homelessness committee, but I was speaking before as a personal private citizen, as I am now. When I look at this property at 1591 Del Monte, it looks like, is it the entire apartment complex or just that one building? Either way, I think the city can do better than how it looks right now. And I really support the city getting in there, putting some investment in and making it better for everybody. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Merrill Chote, Seaside resident. I'm representing the Del Monte Manor as president. And we will like to be on the record that we have nice revenue. We do nothing but low income housing. And we'll be glad to work with the city on any project they can pull forward.
Mayor, no other members of the public have come forward to make public comment on this item.
Thank you. Bringing it back to the dais. What is the will of the council?
Move approval.
Second. It's been properly moved to second. I'll speak on a quick question quickly. I think if we purchased just tonight, city manager, is that correct? Then we'll be, we already have equity of roughly about $120,000? Yes. Roughly, yes. Okay, so this is a win. Yes. Okay. If you're talking about, you know, how do we create more affordable housing? How do we stabilize affordable housing? I think that's a win for the city. All those in favor use the right side voting, which is aye.
Aye.
Nays have the same right.
No.
Abstentions. Okay, ayes have it. What is that? Four, one, zero. Next, we go to item number eight, eight, A, ordinance approving any ordinance, approving a zoning ordinance amendment. ZOA 24 dash zero two to allow residential and mixed-use projects in the commercial mixed-use zoning district and zoning map amendment. MZA 24 dash zero two to change the zoning of 942 Hillby Avenue from commercial, community commercial to CMX. ZOA 24 dash zero two is not subject to the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to section 15061B of the SECO guidelines. ZMA 24 dash zero two is categorically exempt, class 32, from SECO pursuant to section 15332 of the SECO guidelines. This is a second reading of your rule call vote. See you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, since this is a second reading and the last thing between everybody in the main event, I will be very brief here. Do we have the, there the clicker? Thank you. Okay. So again, on December 7th, the Seaside City Council approved the housing element for its general plan. It was later certified by the state. It identified in its technical appendices, a number of sites that could be used for low-income housing. The housing element requires that all sites that were identified for low-income housing must allow for housing with, as a by right on the property. There are two properties in that inventory that currently would require a discretionary application. And so we need to change that in order for the properties to be allowed by right. So one of those properties is zoned, commercial mixed-use, CMX. So one of the changes to be made to the zoning ordinance would be to go to the use classification table in the CMX district and change multifamily housing and mixed-use developments from discretionary applications to being permitted uses. And that would allow for 1130 Broadway to be ministerial. The second site is 942 Hillby Avenue. It is currently zoned community commercial, which does not allow residential. So in order to make this consistent with the housing element, we're proposing to rezone it to commercial mixed-use. The new general plan is already doesn't designate in the site as mixed-use. And so there should be no issues there. It's still consistent with the general plan. The zoning ordinance is not subject to SECO pursuant to section 15061B as none of the development regulations are being changed. It's just a matter of process. And then the zoning map amendment is exempt from SECO pursuant to section 15332 of the SECO guidelines. So staff recommends that the council adopt the attached ordinance and approve ZOA 2402 and ZMA 2402.
Thank you. Any questions from the dais? Take it out, public comment. Public comment is open.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. Mayor, no members of the public have come forward to make public comment on this item.
Thank you so much. Public comment is closed. Bringing it back to the dais. What is the will of the council? Make a motion to approve A. So probably moved to second on the question. Huh? Yeah, there you go. So rule call vote.
Council and agency member Miller. Council and agency member Burks.
Aye.
Council and agency member Garcia Arizona.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim and Vice Chair Pacheco. Mayor and Chair Oglesby.
Aye.
Your motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we go to item number nine, oath of office installation of mayor and council members. We'll turn it over to the city clerk. Administrator of elections.
All right. Good evening, distinguished guests, esteemed colleagues, honored family and community members. Today, we gather to witness a reaffirmation, a renewal of commitment from our re-elected mayor and city council members who through their dedication have earned the trust of this community. It is an honor to stand before you in my role as city clerk to mark this significant occasion. As we reflect on the journey that brought us here, I am reminded of the words of Theodore Roosevelt in his timeless piece, The Man in the Arena. He reminds us that it is not the critic who counts, not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. No credit belongs to those, credit belongs to those who step forth, face the dust and sweat of hard work and engage with unwavering courage and dedication. Each of you here today, mayor and council members, you are the ones in that arena. You have stood in service to our city, faced challenges and engaged in the vital and often difficult work of leadership. You have shown up again and again, striving not for perfection, but for progress. Not for recognition, but for the betterment of the community that you love. The path of public service is never without obstacles. There are stumbles and sometimes the path is littered with doubt. But you have chosen to keep moving forward, to err, to learn and to come back stronger each time with renewed vigor and dedication. Because as Roosevelt so beautifully states, there is no effort without error and shortcoming. There is only courage to dare greatly, to bear the weight of responsibility and to dedicate oneself to a worthy cause. As we look to the future, may this new term be filled with both great enthusiasm and great devotions that Roosevelt speaks of. May you continue to strive with passion, always willing to put forth the effort, even in the face of difficulty. And know that even in those moments when challenges seem insurmountable, you have the respect and trust of this community. For they know that at the best, you stand in the triumph of high achievement. And if you should stumble, you will rise, having dared greatly. So thank you, Mayor, council members for your courage and commitment. Today, as you are sworn in, may you carry the spirit forward, honoring the hopes and trust of the people you serve. Congratulations and may the journey ahead be as fulfilling as it is impactful. Thank you. First, we will have council member Alexis Garcia Arizona.
And if I can invite students that are here today and youth that are here today to come take this oath with me, I'd appreciate that. Todos los jóvenes y los niños se pueden subir conmigo, bajar conmigo.
Are you ready? All right. Are you guys ready? All right. I've never done this with so quite so many people taking that oath. But so you're going to raise your right hand and repeat after me. But if you guys do it, you say your own names. He's going to say his name. But okay, so I Alexis Garcia Arizona.
I Alexis Garcia Arizona.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear truth and true faith and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. Well done, you guys. Well done.
Councilmember Garcia Arizona. Now that you have taken your oath, it is my honor to present you with a framed copy of your certificate of election and your oath of argument of office. These documents symbolize your commitment to serve the people of Seaside with integrity, dedication and purpose. And also on the behalf of city of Seaside, I am honored to present these flowers as a token of our gratitude to the families and the support systems of our elected officials. We know that your encouragement and sacrifices are vital to their ability to serve our community. Thank you for your understanding and unwavering support as they dedicate their time to Seaside. And we're presenting these to your grandmother. Next, we will have council member David R. Pacheco. Councilmember Pacheco has been elected to serve a four-year term from 2024 to 2028 and will be sworn in by his son Franco Pacheco.
Do I get a microcosm? No, it's okay. Yeah. I, sorry, raise your hand, please. Make sure it's your right hands. I, David R. Pacheco.
I, David R. Pacheco.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California. And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter.
Councilmember Pacheco, now that you have taken your oath of office, it's my honor to present to you a framed copy of your certificate of election and your oath of office, documents that symbolize your commitment to serve the people of Seaside with integrity, dedication, and purpose. All right, and then, on behalf of the City of Seaside, we're honored to present these flowers as a token of our gratitude to the families and the support systems of our elected officials, and we're presenting these to Ms. Deborah Crombie. Then, last but not least, we have Mr. Mayor Ian Oglesby. Mayor Oglesby has been elected to serve a term of two years from 2024 to 2026, and will be sworn into office by Honorable Judge Marla O. Anderson.
I'd have you raise your right hand. And repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Ian Oglesby.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend.
I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Right, Mayor Oglesby, now that you have taken your oath of office, it is my honor to present you with a framed copy of your certificate of election and your oath of office, documents that symbolize your commitment to serve the people of Seaside with integrity, dedication, and purpose. And then, also, on behalf of the City of Seaside, we're honored to present these flowers as a token of gratitude to the families and the support systems of our elected official, and these go to Mrs. Rita Oglesby.
Okay, now we're to item number 10, which is a roll call and reconstitution of the city council and Mrs. S. H. C. Oh, okay, we're going to talk first. All right. Well, being the city clerk, we call ourselves working this out at 2 o'clock today. I guess I forgot my directions. We'll have comments from councilmember Garcia Arizona, councilmember Pacheco. But first, if there's any comments that any other council members would like to make.
I just want to share that I'm very honored to have been able to work with you guys. I'm excited to be able to continue to work. You guys have taught me so much about our community, as well as the position of Seaside City Council member. And I just look forward and congratulate each and every one of you, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Burks just said exactly what I was gonna say, so thank you for that. And it really truly has been a great two years serving with you guys. And I'm honored to be up here with you, and congratulations on your election. And look forward to the next two years together.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that. Okay, so now, councilmember Alexis Garcia Arizona.
Thank you, and I have some remarks prepared, both in English and Spanish, so it won't take too long. I'm humbled to be here and stand before you all today, humbled by the trust that you have placed in me to serve another term as your council member. This moment is more than just a ceremony. It's a reflection of our shared journey, our challenges, and the hope that we have for our city's future. Together, we are shaping the legacy of this city, and I'm proud to help continue that work alongside my colleagues. Today, many of you might ask, what are you wearing? I'm wearing a guayabera made by Oaxacan artisans, not just as a nod to my heritage, but as a symbol of the values that guide me. This guayabera represents hard work, craftsmanship, and loyalty to our community, the very same values that Seaside sustains today. The threads of this guayabera symbolize the interconnectedness of our stories, our cultures, and our shared vision for the future. Seaside has a rich history rooted in perseverance and diversity. From its founding as a military town to becoming a haven for Black and Brown families seeking opportunity and belonging, Seaside has always been a city where people come to build a better life. This city holds the stories of so many who have fought against adversities and have built bridges, bridges between communities, between struggles, and between generations. Today, we honor that history, and we stand ready to write the next chapter together. My dedication is to all of you, whether you have voted for me or not. Because when one of us wins, Seaside wins. We share the same streets, the same dreams, and the same desire to see our city move forward. Growing up in Seaside, I saw firsthand what it meant to fight for a better future. My father, my mother, both worked multiple jobs to help sustain my family. I remember seeing the physical and mental toll this took on them, despite the many attempts of them trying to hide it from me. They wanted me to be proud of their labor, to be empowered, to be the best version of myself, and to always remain humble. My grandmother, a pillar of our family, reminded us every day to stay true to our values, our beliefs, to fight for our family, and to never turn our backs on the ones we love the most. She taught us loyalty, duty, and the importance of peace and unity. At a young age, I worked alongside my grandmother cleaning hotel rooms during school vacations while my parents worked. The cost of childcare was too high, and there was always a waitlist somewhere. In high school, I took public transportation, waking up at 5:30 in the morning because my family only had one car. After school, I cared for my younger sibling, cooked, bathed him, and helped him with his homework. Experiences that shaped me. They gave me a deep understanding of the struggles many in our community still face. Seaside has come a long way, but we still have work to do. I am proud of the progress we've made together. Crime has decreased at an all-time low. We've invested into our infrastructure, revitalized parks, creating spaces where families can come together. Small businesses are thriving, and we are committed to tackling the housing crisis head-on. Our council has worked tirelessly, and I am deeply grateful to my colleagues for their support and their shared vision. But our work is far from over. To the youth that are here today, I see you, I hear you, and I want you to know that your voices matter. Your dreams matter. You are the next leaders of this city. One day, you will stand where I'm sitting right, or you will sit where I'm sitting right now, ready to take the seat and carry our community forward. In the meantime, this council will continue to fight for you, to make sure you have opportunities to grow, to learn, and succeed. Education is the foundation of a stronger and safer community. It is the great equalizer, the key to breaking cycles of poverty, and the pathway to opportunity, and that should never depend on the zip code or income. Always remember, anyone can take anything from you, but they can't take your education. That is why I am committed to continue investing in youth prevention programs, recreation, education, and safety. As we move forward, let us honor Seaside's Black history and strengthen the bridge between our Black and Brown communities. Solidarity is not just a word. It is a commitment to stand with one another, to lift each other up, and to fight for justice and equity, especially in this incoming term. This is a new era for Seaside, a time to focus on public safety, the environment, housing, education, and economic prosperity. At a time to ensure every family, every child, and every individual has a chance to thrive, let's create a Seaside that is the envy of many. A city where people come not just to live, but to thrive, dream, and to succeed. To my mentors, Mayor Oglesby, Anthony Rocha, Councilmember Dave Pacheco, Assemblymember Don Addis, and all those who have served before me, thank you for your guidance and example. To my colleagues on this council, thank you for your partnership and support. To my family, friends, and campaign team, thank you for your unwavering belief in me. And to the voters of Seaside, thank you for your trust. I am here because of you. I may have started off as a kid from Seaside, but today I'm a leader for all of you. We will face challenges, there will be obstacles, and there will be those who doubt us. But history will judge us not by our words, but by our actions. I say all of this to remind us that progress is only possible when we come together as a community, when we listen to one another, and when we act with purpose and determination. Every step we've taken has guided me by a vision of a stronger, more united Seaside. Together, we've proven that where there is a will, there is a way. Let's continue to build on this momentum, and I promise you this, I will not back down. I will fight for this community, for our democracy, and a stronger Seaside for all, for our women, our students, immigrants, veterans, LGBTQ community, for all. Together, we will ensure hope. Together, we will show others our strength, resilience, and unity of Seaside. Together, we will make history. And I'm thankful for all of you today, and let's get to work. Bear with me, I got Spanish version. I'll be quick. Es un honor estar ante ustedes hoy. Profundamente agradecido por la confianza que me han brindado al elegirme para servir otro mandato como su concejal. Este momento no es solo una ceremonia. Es un reflejo de nuestro viaje común, de los desafíos que hemos superado y la esperanza que compartimos por el futuro de nuestra ciudad. Juntos estamos dando forma al legado de esta ciudad, y le siento orgulloso de continuar este trabajo junto a ustedes. Hoy porto una guayabera hecha por aquellos oaxaqueños, no solo como un homenaje a mis raíces, sino como un símbolo de los valores que me guían. Esta guayabera representa el trabajo duro, la habilidad artesanal, y la belleza de la comunidad, los mismos valores que Seaside mantiene hoy. Los hilos de esta guayabera simbolizan la interconexión de nuestras historias, nuestras culturas, y nuestra visión compartida para el futuro. Seaside cuenta con una rica historia arraigada en la precedencia y la diversidad. Desde su fundación como una ciudad militar hasta convertirse en un refugio para las familias afroamericanas y latinas que buscaban oportunidades y un sentido de pertenencia. Seaside siempre ha sido una ciudad donde la gente viene a construir una vida mejor. Esta ciudad guarda las historias de tantos que lucharon contra la diversidad y construyeron puentes, puentes entre comunidades, entre las luchas, y entre generaciones. Hoy honramos esa historia y estamos listos para escribir el próximo capítulo juntos. Mi dedicación es para todos ustedes. Hayan votado por mí o no. Porque cuando uno de nosotros gana, Seaside gana. Compartimos las mismas calles, los mismos sueños, y el mismo deseo de ver prosperar nuestra ciudad. Creciendo en Seaside, vi de primera mano lo que significaba luchar por un futuro mejor. Mi padre y madre ambos trabajaron múltiples empleos para mantenernos. Recuerdo ver el costo físico y mental que les estaba tomando, pero recuerdo el esfuerzo que el esfuerzo de ellos de intentar ocultarlo de mí. Querían que me sintiera orgulloso de su labor, que me sintiera empoderado para ser la mejor versión de mí mismo, y que siempre me mantuviera humilde a lo largo del camino. Mi abuela, un pilar de nuestra familia, nos recordaba todos los días que nos mantuviéramos fieles a nuestras creencias, que lucháramos por nuestra familia, y que nunca le diéramos la espalda a quienes amamos. Nos enseñó lealtad, deber, y la importancia de la paz y la unidad. Desde joven trabajé junto a mi abuela limpiando habitaciones hotel durante las vacaciones mientras mis padres trabajaban. El costo de cuidado infantil era demasiado alto y siempre había una lista de espera en alguna parte. En la preparatoria tomaba el transporte público para ir a la escuela, despertándome a las cinco y media de la mañana porque mi familia solamente tenía un carro. Después de clases cuidaba a mi hermano menor, cocinaba, lo bañaba, y lo ayudaba con la tarea mientras mis papás continuaban trabajando. Estas experiencias me formaron, me dieron una comprensión profunda de las luchas que enfrenta mucha gente en nuestra comunidad. Seaside ha avanzado mucho, pero aún tenemos mucho trabajo por qué hacer. Me siento orgulloso del progreso que hemos logrado juntos. La delincuencia ha disminuido a niveles históricos. Hemos invertido en nuestra infraestructura y parques, creando espacios donde las familias pueden reunirse. Las pequeñas empresas están prosperando y estamos comprometidos a abordar la crisis de vivienda. Nuestro consejo ha trabajado incansablemente y estoy profundamente agradecido con mis colegas por su apoyo y visión compartida. La educación es la base de una comunidad más fuerte y segura. Es el gran igualador, la clave para romper los ciclos de pobreza y el camino hacia la oportunidad. Recuerden, cualquiera puede quitarles algo, pero nadie puede quitarles la educación. Por eso debemos seguir invirtiendo en nuestra juventud, en programas de prevención juvenil, recreación, educación, y seguridad. A medida que avanzamos, honremos la historia de los afroamericanos en Seaside y fortalezcamos el puente entre nuestra comunidad. Enfrentamos muchas de las mismas luchas, y juntos somos más fuertes. Esta es una nueva etapa para Seaside, un momento para centrarnos en la seguridad pública, el medio ambiente, la vivienda, la educación, y la prosperidad económica. Un momento para garantizar que cada familia, cada niño, y cada individuo tengan la oportunidad de sobresalir. Vamos a crear un Seaside que sea la envidez de la región. Una ciudad donde la gente venga no solo a vivir, sino a prosperar, soñar, y tener éxito. A mis mentores, el alcalde Ian Oglesby, el concejal Anthony Rocha, el concejal Dave Pacheco, y el asambleísta Don Addis, y todos aquellos que han servido antes que yo, gracias. Gracias por su ejemplo. A mis colegas en este consejo, gracias por su colaboración y apoyo. A mi familia, amigos, y equipo de campaña, gracias por su firme creencia en mí. Y a los votantes de Seaside, gracias por su confianza. Estoy aquí gracias a ustedes. Podría haber comenzado como un niño de Seaside, pero hoy soy un líder para todos ustedes. Enfrentaremos desafíos. Habrán obstáculos, y habrán quienes nos duden. Pero la historia nos juzgará, no por nuestras palabras, sino por nuestras acciones. Digo todo esto para recordarnos que el progreso solo es posible cuando nos unimos como comunidad, cuando nos escuchamos unos a otros, y cuando actuamos con propósito y determinación. Cada paso que hemos dado ha sido guiado por una visión de un futuro más fuerte y justo. Juntos hemos demostrado, donde hay voluntad, hay un camino. Sigamos construyendo sobre este impulso, y les prometo esto. Sigamos construyendo sobre este impulso y les prometo esto, no me rendiré, no les defraudaré. Lucharé por esta comunidad, por nuestra democracia y por un Seaside más fuerte y seguro para todos. Lucharé por sus derechos, por nuestras mujeres, estudiantes, veteranos, inmigrantes, comunidad LGBT y todos los residentes de esta ciudad. Juntos aseguraremos la esperanza, juntos mostraremos a los demás la fuerza, la resiliencia y la unidad de Seaside. Juntos haremos historia. Muchas gracias y que viva Seaside.
Thank you, I'll say, thank you so much, council member and soon to be mayor, Tim Dan Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I get started with my prepared comments, I just wanted to recognize some people that Reverend Lust mentioned that they may not want to be here. But all these people, they are public servants, not only want to be here, but they enjoy being here. And I've been coming to these things for decades and this is the most of elected officials that I've seen count this year, so I want to thank them. So I'll just mention some of the people that I made notes of. So the captains and the star, seaside stars that I call it are Lisa Mitchell and Franco Pacheco, some seaside stars that are present, their names are Umbrover, Ruthie Watts, Dr. Betty Lust in spirit, Reverend Lust, our supervisor Wendy Rudaskew, Anthony Rocha, Assemblywoman Don Addis, Airport Member Anthony Armini, former councilman Darryl Short Kay, Roslyn Green with MPC, the Judge Marla Anderson. And all of them have made a tremendous impact in Seaside and our elected officials are people that make change and I'm so proud that they're here tonight. But my comments are, and my notes say, good evening. And we should say good evening real loud because we are part of a family and it seems so, good evening.
Good evening.
There you go. Thank you for attending the council meeting and swearing in ceremony time. Your partnership with us in moving Seaside forward is a necessity as it makes us all better. You know, I believe in team and I need all the help I can get in order to be successful. And I had a very large team that made me better. So I wanted to thank Kalen Falaki, Christopher Falaki, Bertrand Dupree, Francois Avery, Gail Tier, Frank Rossi, Bobby Maxwell, Jeanette Walton, Anne Marie Pagon, Charles Coach Williams, Ramona Lita Reed, Becky Stover and mostly Deborah Plumley, who not only walked with me visiting over 5,000 homes, but often kept me calm prior to the forums and during campaign months. A special appreciation to my son Franco, who is my campaign manager and I believe ran one of the best races in Monterey County, did an amazing job with a real challenging candidate. I chose Franco for the responsibility of swearing me in off, not only because he's my son, ran a campaign, but his family. And my family with Deborah, Michelle, Rio and Koda, I see as a part of the Seaside family, we are a family. I do not see a better connection in this moment of a new beginning and new term of service than my family locally, than our greater Seaside family. Seaside in our community is many things. But most importantly, we are family. We play to agree, play together, disagree and argue. Don't often talk to each other at times, but we work together. We share dreams and often unite each other doing great things. You know, as a parent, there's no greater rewards of parent than seeing your children achieve success. As parents, we work to make our children and grandchildren have greater opportunity than we did as youths. We as a city council and staff strive to ensure Seaside is better than we began our individual paths. Be part of the Seaside family does its best to achieve for our families and our community. This council will work hard and listen to residents and parents who are youth and residents will be able to return to Seaside after college or remaining in Seaside, be able to live a quality of life that is enriching and rewarding. I believe what makes our personal families and the Seaside family powerful is the pride we have in family and respect we have for each other in our community. We need to share the pride, respect and invest in our family and the city of Seaside for a richer community and opportunity and lifelong experiences. I and the council are glad to join you on this journey. In my last three terms and beyond, and many beones, we have talked about a greater downtown, development of campus town, improved parks, improved streets, the golf course hotel, greater family recreation plus more. The time is now for our hopes to become a reality. Our future is bright and we will together as a team make Seaside stronger and the beacon of the peninsula for our residents and family. Our individual families in the city of Seaside, team of residents, employees and councils are invested in expanding in our sense of community and pride with this Delta priority. We are better together and will achieve much as we move Seaside forward. I am lucky to have a wonderful and supportive family and I'm thankful to the residents of Seaside and family for their trust. It is an honor to serve the residents and work with this council to achieve a job as a team for our children and grandchildren. We need, we must and will get things done. That makes Seaside stronger for the future of our families. That is my priority as your councilman person. In closing, thank you for the opportunity. Together, we can make a team with Seaside trust, respect and hard work. Making a difference that will change lives and make us all better for today and our children's future. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is Annalise Mitchell in here? She was. Yeah, just, yeah, she's, no, she's out there. I think they're facilitating the refreshments, but. Does she leave? Yeah, well. Come on in, have a seat, have a seat somewhere. I just want you in the room, that's all. So that's, uh, good, good evening, everyone. Yeah, like Dave said, you know, we're family, right? Good evening. Appreciate it. Like the mayor protest said, we established the protocol, but I do want to give a special shout out to a council member, Anthony Rocha, a good, good dear friend. We appreciate him coming over. It's good to see him. Definitely a strong advocate for his city, city of Salinas. I want to thank everyone, but I want to thank particularly the Honorable Judge Anderson for swearing me in again. I believe this is the fourth time and she did the honors the first time. And so for me, it's always a special treat to have the Honorable Judge Anderson here swearing me in. So thank you so much. To my family, friends, supporters and the people of Seaside, thank you for your presence here and to the voters of the great city of Seaside. Thank you again for placing your trust in me. To the council members, Checo, Garcia Zola, congratulations for running. With not only a winning campaign, but one focused on moving Seaside forward. I look ahead to the many challenges we face, but more importantly, the many manifold opportunities that await this council. Working together, there's nothing that can hold Seaside back. And so I want to say that to all council members. I'm glad to be able to work with all four of you and we look to go forward. To my campaign team, supporters and everyone who believed in this vision, thank you. Your hard work and belief in a better Seaside motivated me to continue fighting for our shared future. You made calls, you text, you knocked on doors, you spoken to your neighbors and your friends. Yeah, and I want to say thanks for the donations too. That was, that was important. Your hard earned money. Thank you for your hard earned money. But what's most important is like we, I talked about my grassroots campaign, which is friend to friend, neighbor to neighbor. That's really what changes people. That's what convinced them to, to vote for someone that they may not know. Over the last 10 months, I've spoken with countless residents who have shared their challenges, stories of families struggling to pay rent or buy a home, often forced to move away from the city they love. These conversations stay with me. They feel my commitment to build housing that is truly affordable for our workforce and families. All that income, different income levels. You know, sometimes I stay up at night thinking about how, how did this city create housing for those that are being pushed out their housing? I go to sleep, I have dreams and, and sometimes in those dreams, somebody's chasing me through those houses. You know, so I don't know what's going on, but I wake up in the morning and the problem still persists. There's nothing that we can solve overnight, but what we can do is work on it consistently every day. You know, one house at a time, one project at a time, one property at a time. The, the, I was talking to someone a couple of days ago, the days of so-called big government, right? Governments, federal government spending lots of money, but the days of them sending down money to build housing in communities are gone. And it's been gone for about 25 years, if not 30. And so the reality is we have to do a lot ourselves. And we have to prod our local state government elected officials to do the best they can. But we have to work together to get it done. They just don't build those type of housing anymore. But we will work together as a housing to get there. A coalition of voters, which may not share many things in common, other than a vote for me. And I acknowledge that everyone that voted for me may not agree with everything that I do. But it was enough of a coalition to win and our coalition won with a mandate to lead, that's a circle. Yeah, give it up. It was a good campaign. All the candidates did well. They had strong messages and it was a clear choice. It was a three-person race for mayor and it's clear choices. And our campaign won with 54% of the votes. Clear mandate to get things done. And I, and I think what Roloff said earlier about, you know, they voted for stability. They voted for what they have and they like what they have. That doesn't mean they love it. See, I didn't say that. But they voted to keep us here. And if you look around the city councils within this county and up and down the state, some of them changed, the majority haven't changed, whether it's one or whether it was five, but it changed. And for us to move forward as three says a lot about us working together, says a lot about what we've been able to get done and how we get it done. How we get it done is most important. To move forward with a shared vision, that is exactly what I'm going to do, provide a vision and lead this great city forward. As your mayor, I'm focused on addressing the issues that impact us all. Working with the council, I will push partnerships with affordable housing developers to create housing that meets the needs of our workforce and truly affordable for our families. Particularly building on the old former Ford Oort land I was given to us 30 years ago to build housing and economic development. But we're as a council and US city are still receiving pushbacks from people by saying, "Don't build on that land you were given 30 years ago because now trees are older." They're on the land when we got it, so they're just older. And now don't build on that land because you may have an animal on that land. Right? And I have to look at you guys and have to say, well, what do you want to do? And I hear you clearly. You said use the land that we received to build affordable housing and workforce housing for our residents. That's clear. And that's what we need to do. And I look forward to doing that. But people are actually working to stop that. I just got to be clear and say it right in front of you. So when you, so when I tell you in the street, when I tell you in the grocery store, when I tell you at the park, moving wood chips, where are my wood chips? Everybody there, right? Right? Whenever I meet you and I say, I don't want you to think it was a secret between me and you. Saying it right here, it's people trying to stop us from building on land that we were given 30 years ago to build affordable housing and other economic development parcels. I will support small businesses and attract new investment to drive economic prosperity in our growing downtown. And it is a growing downtown. And the wider seaside. I will ensure our firefighters and our police, our first responders have the resources they need to protect. And I want to go slowly with this, to protect our citizens with honor and to serve them with dignity. And the resources so that they can do that and return home safely to their loved ones after every shift. That's our commitment. I will assure that we collaborate with skilled labor unions to increase local jobs and internships, ensuring pathways to, to careers that provide livable wages. Jobs with livable wages where you only have to work one job to afford to live here. Livable wage jobs with career pathways to those STEM jobs that are increasingly surrounding our kids. And I say that because those STEM jobs with the growth, with the growth of AI, many of those jobs in the future are walking around with them in their cell phones in their pocket. When you're looking at your kid and they're looking at their cellphone, looking at their tablet, that job is in their tablet. The jobs of the future, those STEM jobs are right there. And we're 40 miles away from Silicon Valley and me and the city manager and, and where is Dan at? And the director and, and the council are working hard to bring a, a, those STEM type of, well, really fat labs. We're trying to bring a fat lab to the city of Seaside so we can start with our tiny, tight university and grow them in our STEM, our STEM labs of tomorrow. Yeah. You know, we're in the last stages of that. They have one in Salinas and I think the next one is in Richmond. Right? So, so we're on the cutting edge. I will work with local organizations to strengthen tenant protections and improve the quality of life of all our residents. Ensuring more housing is truly affordable and landlords are providing a clean and safe housing environment as required by law and just human decency. I will continue to focus and invest along with the council in repairing our streets, sidewalks, parks and buildings. None of this work is done alone. I stand here today on the foundation created by the dedication and service of those who came before me. I am honored to have known and worked with these trailblazers. Mayor McClair, Jordan, Rubio, Bachofner and my mentor, former mayor supervisor Jerry Smith. Where their leadership and vision of a better Seaside. And I want, I want to thank the, the pastors that are here now. They're always focused on a betterment of Seaside and I want to highlight them in our community. I also want to thank community leaders like Ruthie Watts. Carlos Ramos. This is more, you know, you don't want to get applause. These are, these are easy people to applaud for, but I, I'm lucky. Again, like I said, I'm lucky that I have known and worked with these trailblazers. And I know they're not the only ones, but I'm seeing how lucky I was and am. Because some of them have gone on and some of them, of course, are still here. Colonel Al Glover, Benny Cooper, go ahead, you want to give it up for Ben Cooper and Helen Rucker. You know, we have other council members in the room. We have council member Alexander and then we have council member Darryl Short Kay. We again stand on the foundation that they provided for us in this place. You know, when I got here is, uh, Mancini, what's his first name? Tom Mancini and Steve Blumer. Those are ones when I got here. Those are ones when I got here, just laid it out for me and was welcoming. And so I would never forget them. But I do, and again, it's many more that I don't have all night to name. But they're from all stripes, all races, all creeds, all age groups, right? And another dear friend I see over there. This Sherry Hastings. From our days of the youth violence prevention, we share so many stories, so many good days. But I want to highlight a local icon, Mr. Mel Mason. If he was not in the fight, it would have been lost long ago. And I shouldn't have to say what fight, right? I shouldn't have to say what fight. If he wasn't in there, that's my icon, Mr. Mel Mason. And the one who kept the faith and left us much, much too soon. But he did leave us a blueprint of a well-spent life of advocacy and love for your fellow man. And woman. The late Reverend Dr. H. H. Lessing. Their tireless commitment to service serves as an inspiration for all of us. And it's, you know, I got to say, I just, sometimes I just break down sometimes when I talk about Reverend Lusk, but no, I just, you know, someone that gave so much time, you know, nobody was perfect. But he gave so much time to make other people better and to make a community better. And you are lucky to have pass through him as he was pouring out his knowledge and wisdom. To my children, grandchildren who are here, some are here today, two are here. And one of my other daughters in West Virginia, another one is in Indiana. To them and the children of Seaside, because when I look at my kids, you know, grown and grandkids growing up, you're my constant inspiration. When I look at young people in the city, I can never forget, "The future belongs to you." That's what I see when I see little kids playing, you know, what, you know, kids do, right? No problems in the world. They shouldn't have a problem. We should be solving their problems. And that's what I mean. The future belongs to them and we should never forget it. You are our future and all of us, those in power and not, must do everything in our power to make sure your future is bright and shining like a diamond. I don't want to use Rihanna's little song for it. It's good, right? One of their, their future should be shining bright. And sometimes we argue, we fussify because these things is not easy to shape the world, right? It's not easy. But why are we doing it? You know, are we doing it just so we can go home and relax? Or we're doing it for that little kid that, you know, crossing the street when they said we crossed the street? You know, throwing trash candy wrappers down, not knowing no better. It's for who comes after us. And so that is about for me. The work is hard and every day, the work will be hard and every day to ensure your future and for the future of every young person here in Seaside. But this is just the beginning. Moving Seaside forward will take all of us working together. In the words of my dear friend and a daughter of Seaside, Annalise Mitchell, we are better together. Four of the most beautiful words ever put together is we are better together. I invite each of you to join me in this effort. Whether it's sharing your ideals, volunteering your time or simply supporting your neighbors. Together we can build a Seaside that is safer, more equitable and full of opportunities. A place where our children thrive. You know, I think we, we said a lot of things to a lot of people, you know, in the last, I guess, 40 minutes here of the council. But it's all about us working together and getting things done to the best of our abilities. And so I want to end just by speaking to my beautiful wife Rita. Your your unwavering love and support makes everything I do possible. I only fly so high with the wind and support you provide each and every day. In the words of Councilmember Garcia Arizona, let's get to work. Thank you. God bless the Seaside and all of you. Thank you. Item number 11, 10, item number 10. Roll call, reconstitution of the city council and the success agency to the redevelopment of the city of Seaside. Honorable City Clerk. We have about three, we have about three minutes and then we're going to adjourn.
Council and agency member Miller. Council and agency member Burks. The re-elected council and agency member Garcia Arizona. Re-elected mayor ProTim and vice chair of Pacheco. And the re-elected mayor and chair Augustby. You do have a court.
Thank you so much. Next thing on the agenda is item number 11, which is adjournment to the reception. There will be no further business on this agenda. This meeting is adjourned.